Here.
Mr. Miskowski.
Okay, so we're working off of an amended agenda. We are going to be adding a needed closed session is item five. Come out of before we do another action or adjourn. We did add a public comment period to this meeting as well. It's item four. But what we're going to start with is is board discussion of of this issue now. I know we've got representatives from the State Department of Taxation. But Mr. Hudgens, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. Gentlemen, before you, there's a number of topics to discuss on regarding the tax assessment. And I hope that with this discussion and some decision making at the end, that we can really chart the best path forward for the county. I'd like to start by going over the option to revoke the ordinance 2021 assessment. The State Tax Department was contacted concerning the county's ability to revoke the current 2021 assessment and rebid. The county has already reached six year maximum allowed by Virginia code. Mr. Rod Compton, Director of the Property Unit State Taxation Department, upon request, has been reviewing legal context and researching the code, determining if the county may legally revoke this assessment. Mr. Compton stated that there has been precedent. It's not the first time that a county has lost faith in the integrity of a reassessment. Mr. Compton further provided the information that the penalties for exceeding the mandated six year reassessment or the resulting official assessment sales ratio study falling outside of a mandated range of seventy to one hundred and thirty percent. Really, the penalty is that the county share of the alcoholic beverage control system, net profits of operations would be diverted. However, in practice, several years ago, the General Assembly removed the profit sharing provision and diverted the ABC profits to the general fund, essentially removing enforcement for noncompliance. Therefore, there is no special specific penalty in statute that is applied to exceeding the six year period, other than a lower tax, lower assessment value may impact the CPI for the school system. Our case, that will not change from our current rate of support. Open it up to discussion.
So you're Mr. Chair Bill Hudgens, District One. You're saying that it will not affect the school.
That is my understanding, but I've also seen correspondence. The best person to ask, it would be the school administration.
Don't we have someone on Zoom tonight dealing with the education? I thought I read that somewhere. Maybe I didn't.
I believe the representatives from the State Tax Department are on and may speak a little to that, but it is not their specific. They're not specific to that.
All right, Mr. Hudgens, if we could go ahead and introduce them and have them say say a bit here, I would like that to be the next thing we do.
Sure, um, Mr. David C, I believe, is in as well as Mr. Rod Compton. They are available to answer any questions regarding the actual code and code ramifications of our decision on this.
All right, can we identify them and get them unmuted and have them introduce themselves?
Working on that now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a question while we're waiting. So our our counsel, Mr. Rick Roberts, wouldn't have any information to give us on this either?
He will. I wanted to kick it off with with Mr. Hudgens and with the State Department of Taxation basically speaking to our ability to, you know, either accept revoke or or any other option that we may choose. And then Mr. McRoberts can go over what those options are and they're in the ramifications of each of them, I think is what he's prepared to speak to.
Okay, thank you.
If we still have a moment, do we have a figure just in case it is enforced? What it'll cost? The, you know, the the statute about noncompliance? If they do decide for some reason to enforce it?
Well, the point, Mr. Garber, was that the only enforcement measure that was ever in the code was the the taking away of the profit share from local ABC revenues. But the General Assembly removed our profit share from ABC revenues years ago. And so there is no enforcement measure, you know, in in the code.
Just want to make sure.
That language still exists in the code, but it's not practically enforceable because they don't give us any of that money.
They generally don't reverse that.
I'd love to go the other way, but yeah.
Nothing's impossible.
No.
All right, I see Mr. Compton is on and unmuted. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. McRoberts, Mr. Hudgens. I appreciate the opportunity for the Tax Department to be represented here this evening. Just one point of clarification with regards to Mr. Hudgens' statement. In that last paragraph, the department actually did not make a statement with regards to the CPI for the school system. We do not know what the impact may or may not be by not doing a general reassessment for that formula. The same goes with the 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 rate that's utilized for public service properties. That assessment ratio is critical in determining the taxable value for that as well. And we have not calculated that impact at this point. Also, David C. from the Tax Department is also online. And we also have Terry Born, who trained the Board of Equalization. She's also with us this evening.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, you colleagues want to introduce themselves?
Sure. David?
Yes, sir.
Do you like to introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry, I didn't hear that. Name is David C. I've been a Virginia by birth and been working in the real estate assessment field for almost thirty years and wide breadth of experience. And and tonight I asked Rod to lead our communication. But if you ever have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to assist. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Born. Pause you real quick. We can't hear you. You seem to be unmuted on our end.
Doesn't seem that she's connected to the audio.
If I can speak for Ms. Born, she provided the the training for the King William Board of Equalization just recently. And that follows that includes a review of the statutes, the methodology behind the purpose of equalization, and many of the issues that you deal with in that very important task of the Board of Equalization, which perhaps will have a lot of work to do this year. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Born, we want to try that again. It looks like you were connecting. Oh, still don't have you. Okay.
He's connected to the audio portion.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, let's for for the representatives from the Department of Taxation. Let's go ahead and kickoff questions from from the board that you guys may have for these representatives while we have them on the line.
I guess my question, Chair, would be how familiar are they with the situation that we're in? And I guess the amount of errors that we're seeing.
And yes, sir.
Yeah.
I apologize. Yes, sir. Well, I'll address that. We have had communication, but we have not had any intimate documentation with regards to the situation. We do know, obviously, there's a problem that the board has brought forward. However, we have not had anything but a cursory review, sales analysis at this point.
And I guess had they known anything, my question was going to be, which way would they go in this situation if they can give that kind of advice? Reassessment or or fix the problem?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, the the Tax Department's role and the reassessment process for the localities really is limited to the beginning of the process where we certify the assessor as a professional assessor, which is based on previous experience, licensure, ability and education. And then after the reassessment is completed, we do a certified ratio study for the annual sales ratio report, which is utilized across many agencies to determine factors we've talked about with regards to public service valuations and creating true tax value for the educational formula and other means. During the assessment process itself, that is primarily a local matter. And the Tax Department generally has very limited to no oversight of that process.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Born is now connected with microphone.
Okay, great.
And now.
And then there's echoing. So so my name is Terry Born, and I work for the Department of Taxation. I'm the one who is responsible for training the Board of Equalization for the localities throughout Virginia. And my background is I'm a commercial real estate appraiser and a real estate appraiser in mass appraisal and fee. Worked in this area for over thirty years now. So I provide advisory aid and consulting when needed. And if there's any way I can help any of you, please reach out.
Okay, great. Let's carry on with questions from from board members. Mr. Hudgens has asked a couple. Mr. Garber, you want to start with any questions you have? For the State.
I'm more interested in the legal, the legal end of the I do have a question so far. Is the certification of that land book, does that have any effect at all on on what we're looking at? If that has been signed and duly recorded in the clerk's office? Because it was an error with that, too. I'm sure you're all aware.
Yes, sir. The the only process that we would look at from the Tax Department's purview is that that general reassessment had been completed and the reassessment or land book had been duly recorded with the clerk. Could that be classified as a reassessment? We would look at that as as a as a recorded reassessment at this point. But again, action of the board, that's something we would have to wait and see what what happened from from that standpoint. We can only go with the document that's been recorded when we're looking at doing the certified ratio studies for for the current reassessment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, talking to Patricia Norman today, she said there are still errors in that. And I didn't quite understand everything with that. But she said that he sent an addendum signed to signing off to the the land book, but not actually the book. So I don't know. It sounds like it's still a lot of errors in it. I know there are in property amounts, acreage, that type of thing.
Still.
Still, as of what they had sent Patricia and she had, they were showing people with ten acres having a hundred acres.
Yeah, I've got somewhere around one thousand four hundred acres.
I'd sell it quick.
Yeah, I need to. You want to buy it?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Greenwood?
No, I just I just want to move on. Like I said, it's up to us. It's not up to the Board of Taxation. I mean, they're just here to to help us with ideas. It's really, I don't think they have any. I want to hear the legal stuff. And the book doesn't have anything to do with anything anyway, because that was a printing error. And supposedly, the the numbers in the actual electronic form were correct. But like you said, it still should be correct on the printed form, too, just because we haven't got the correct printed form. And that's that's bad. I mean, that should be one of the things we should consider. But I think we need to just move on and find out what our legal ramifications are if we can. And like I said, we're not going to be penalized, but we just need to decide if we're going to accept it or move on.
All right, Mr. Moore?
Pretty much same as Stuart and Stephen. Mr. Compton, are you going to be available if we have questions later? Are you you available to stay on?
Yes, sir. I'll be here for the entire entire day.
Great, thank you.
A couple of questions that I had. One, you had mentioned analyzing it against sales. Have y'all had an opportunity to do that with this assessment?
A very cursory review for the estimated ratio. And I'll defer to Mr. C. I know that he'd looked at that data. And I don't know what size of data set he he acquired. David, are you available?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Compton mentioned, it was very cursory, last minute. Obviously, statistics may not show the whole picture, folks, but it looked very, very clear in an appropriate field locality after reassessment, not using the new construction sales, as we refer to them at the state, just the resale sale properties. We were right about the county was indicating ninety seven percent, which is definitely within the realm of reassessment requirement of being at or near a hundred percent of market value, which is far far exceeds the low level that you are at right now.
Okay. In your research on other localities that have taken action to invalidate assessments in the in the past, what have typically been the given reasons?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Compton. We submitted a few resolutions from other counties with their reasons. Of course, they can be numerous and political in nature sometimes.
Those those two resolutions were submitted to Mr. Hudgens and to Mr. McRoberts earlier today. And I believe your previous county administrator also had those as well. They were appeared to be submitted prior to the reassessment being completed. And at that time, they brought forward that were there were deficiencies in the work product. And those are listed in those documents, which I do not have in front of me at this moment. I can dig those up if you would like for me to send them to the board.
Well, I was just curious, just to just to continue to frame the discussion on on, you know, what we acknowledge, what we're talking about. And, you know, that what we're what we're focused on is process consistency following the 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 state code guidelines, following their own manuals. And that is the is the key focus. You know, we just talked about the base in pretty small sample size that the the values seem in line based on that sample size. But we've got acknowledged inconsistencies. We've got acknowledged failure to follow procedure. And that's that's what we are most concerned about. So having having settled that, I want to go ahead and bring in then Mr. McRoberts at this point to discuss what what our real options are practically forward. And we can discuss person count of each. Hey, Andrew, we can't hear you.
He doesn't have his audio on.
He might not be connected. I need to connect the audio, Andrew. While we're working on that, everybody, let me just, Mr. Wolf came in in the chat. But let me go ahead and state it out here. If you want to speak during the public comment period, please send a message to Mr. Wolf that you want to do that. And we'll get you on the list and we'll get you unmuted when your turn comes. If you're on the phone and you wish to speak, star nine will is the I think the hand raising function on that. And so they'll know that you want to speak, even if you're on the phone and not on the Zoom. We reconnecting, Andrew?
Looks like you may have dropped off.
Okay.
Is there is?
All right, now let's get him unmuted. Andrew, you might have your own microphone muted. I saw it connect to audio and your your mute icon is not there.
He could try like you usually do sometime in calling on his phone for the audio part.
Might have to.
His associate, Mr. Hudson, is online also. I don't know what, maybe he can lend something in the meantime.
Seadwark?
Yes, Mr. Sean Hudson, Travis. If you could unmute him.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I think Andrew is connecting right now, but I would just jump in and say that it would probably be preferable for us to discuss any legal advice in a closed session before we discussed it in an open session.
Sure. I don't think what we're looking for at this stage is is the, you know, anything sensitive legal. But Andrew had been discussing earlier just the practical options that we had. And he and I discussed him discussing that in a meeting. But of course, anything that is a legal matter, we would discuss in close session.
Can you hear me now?
We've got you.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. At least I didn't show up as a cat. There's progress there. The a number of different options, unfortunately, none of them really great. One of them, of course, is to accept the assessment that has been presented to you and go forward with the BOE process. The second option would be to reach out to bright minds and get them to agree to come in and fix whatever the issues are, perhaps in working with the Board of Equalization to make that happen. Boards of equalization have jurisdiction to correct and equalize assessments. They don't have to have an appeal in front of them, so that could potentially be it. The third option would be to not have bright minds do it, but to engage someone else, either a full time employee as a real estate assessor for the county or to engage another company similar to bright minds that would come in and complete it. In my experience, companies don't like to come in and clean up other companies' work. However, maybe a full time employee would be, you know, something that'd be more of an option. The third option would be to basically cancel this completely, refuse to accept the assessment and redo it by hiring another company or the full time assessor. And at that point in time, you know, it would take probably a couple of years to do a new assessment at that point. Under any circumstances, unless it's maybe option number one and maybe option number two, there's no way you're going to complete the assessment in time and get it corrected in time to send out tax bills, which would have to be done by the first week in May. So I think those are really your options that I can think of. Happy to answer any questions.
Andrew, if I could, just tell me if I shouldn't ask this right now. It is a performance bond that had to be supplied per the contract, actually for the full amount of the contract. So what would have to be done technically to be able to obtain that money? What do we have to prove without going to? Do we have to go to a court of law? Or can we request it saying that these things weren't done per the contract?
I have not reviewed. I have not reviewed, Stuart, I've not reviewed the performance bond. So I don't know what the terms of it were. If someone has it, they can send it to me. That would be great. But generally speaking, performance bonds are typically by insurance companies. And they're like making a claim against an insurance company. So you would make the claim to the insurance company to say the condition of the bond has been met. We would like to have this amount of money paid to us. At that point in time, you're dealing with an insurance company. They would probably sit down with their insured bright minds and try to get bright minds to make it right somehow. That's my my experience with performance bonds. And then at that point in time, if that doesn't happen, then at some point you're battling with the insurance company over whether they want to pay up or not. The other thing to be aware of is that almost, I mean, again, I have not seen the terms of the bond. And so take this with a grain of salt, but most bonds are going to provide, if anything, they're going to go and hire somebody to to finish the job or to fix the problems. And so it's not probably not going to be the amount of the original contract. They would probably pay us something a lot less because they would determine that it would take a lot less to fix whatever the problems are. So I don't think we can look to that bond to say, go out and do a new assessment. I think at most, we might look to that bond to perhaps cover, you know, the amount that it would take to cure the issues that we've identified with the assessment.
We would be very lucky to find another assessment group to come in and clean the mess up. Probably.
I think it'd be unlikely. One, because nobody likes to clean up somebody else's mess. But then, second of all, there's only a handful of companies in Virginia that do this. And finding one is, you know, might might be difficult. It's not already busy. I know that when Ms. Tassanari resigned, she was planning on going back out and seeking a full time assessor, which that might be another option.
Which would could be time consuming, finding a skilled person to do that also.
Correct. I mean, you may, it may take several months to find somebody. If you could find somebody, then.
Is it? I assume that the company would have to be licensed to do work in Virginia. Is it possible that we, if not, is it possible we could grab someone from an adjacent state or even somewhere in the United States? Is that possible?
Well, they would need to be licensed in Virginia and qualified by the State Department of Taxation. Now, appraisers from outside the state can come in and get temporary licensure as an appraiser. What the requirement to go through the state is, you'd have to ask them. They're on the line. Maybe they can answer that question. But but it would take both. They'd have to be licensed as well as be certified by the state.
Mr. Compton, if if you're able.
Sure, yes. There's precedent for that in Gloucester County fairly recently, where they contracted with Vision to come in and be their county assessor to finish the modeling aspect and final final reassessment for their most current reassessment. So there is precedent for that to happen.
Mr. Rick Roberts, I had a point of clarification. So if we did go against the security bond, it's up to us to come up with the company? Or does that company get to pick who the person is that's going to clean up the mess?
Well, like I said, the first thing that the surety is undoubtedly going to do is going to get the. Their insured bright minds involved and to see if they can't clean up the mess. And assuming they can do it, then that would be. You know, what the insurance company would do. At that, then the surety certainly is going to have a say over who comes in and fixes it. At the very least, I know the surety is going to have say over how much money gets spent. Because just like an insurance claim, they're going to tell you what they think it's worth. And then that's all they're going to pay.
Right, but as we discussed when I was chairman and I asked you about this when it all started. You said for us to work with him and work out an amicable situation and as we had that meeting with them. He denied everything and everything was correct and we, he would not negotiate with us at all. So I doubt that that. That form would even take place, but I mean, I guess it could, but. And now he has since quit.
Well, and then that was my understanding from Ms. Tassaneri that that bright minds basically. Refuse to come back and help anymore. I'm not sure if that's correct. That's what I heard from him.
That that is. But that's why I'm asking, they they could be forced through their insurance company to do it?
Well, certainly anybody that. Wants to be insured again or have another surety bond again, certainly is going to want to make their surety happy.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Hodges. I had a loss of words right now. It's it's no easy. Thing to do either way we go on this. From what I hear from the constituents that are calling from all over the county. It's, they're saying it's messed up throughout. And not just a few odds and ends like the acreage amounts and that, but that's just one thing. A lot of what I've heard is that. Indust- industrial. Real estate went down. Business went up and residential went up. My thoughts are is, I think, going with. Andrew dealing with and go back to the surety and see what they can force into action at this point. I was of a mind just to shut the whole thing down, but it doesn't sound like we can come out very well that way. But I'm not still not totally against doing that and start all over.
I'm sort of with Mr. Hodges. I that was, like I said, this is throwing a monkey wrench in the whole thing for me. That's the way I was headed myself, but I was assuming that the surety bond was gonna. Like pay us back and let us go get a new reassessment, but yeah. If they're going to try to get the same company to fix it or another company to step in and fix it. Some of the issues are there are over three hundred. Cases that are over assessed that are up against the Board of Assessment. And that's just the ones that are up for overage. The people that are under. I hate to say it, but they're not coming forward and gonna say that their assessment was less. I mean, I was one of the ones, mine was less. And I went to them and of course I couldn't get mine up. But let's say there's a thousand parcels that are lower assessed. If we fix the over three hundred that are over assessed. We're going to be missing out on some income on all the ones that are under assessed. So I'm I'm in a quandary now. I don't know.
After looking at the letter, the. Some of the statements made that he could not or would not take the assessor job. Because of the impacts on his overall business. I think bringing him back or even forcing him back would be a risky. A risky thing to do.
I agree with you. He had a contract. He had a contract for that, too. And he wanted to walk away from it simply because he's found greener pasture somewhere else. That's my take on.
Well.
So can Andrew, can you real quick go over what becomes of the current BOE under these options? And obviously, if we revoke the assessment, the BOE is disbanded, we cancel the the appeals and the entire process and we just. Go back to the previous assessment for now while we perform a reassessment. If. Under the circumstance, we decide to. Move forward with what we have and try to fix it. What happens to the BOE at that point in time? Obviously, we would have to in some fashion delay the implementation of the assessment. But statutorily, when can they meet? How long can they meet? What are some of the ramifications there?
I'm not familiar if King William has an ordinance setting deadlines. I believe that you do. Or maybe it was in some document I read, so. But those are set by you guys and you can certainly change them if needed. Statutorily, all that the BOE has is a deadline that they have to complete their work. And they are disbanded at the end of this year. So they would have till the end of the year statutorily to do their work. However. You know, that's controlled in some respects by local ordinance, which y'all could certainly amend those as needed.
But as far as.
As far as what happens to the BOE, if you try to fix it, my advice would be. Try to work with the BOE and have the BOE be the instrument to do the fix. Because they've got the power to basically sign orders and correct assessments. And so that would be the vehicle I would recommend that you follow. If you wish to try to fix this instead of throw it out.
Andrew, I read somewhere, and I don't know if it was in Virginia State Code or the ordinance, but I read somewhere where the Board of Equalization could have a term up to three years. So what was that about?
That's a permanent Board of Equalization. And and in in some locality, certainly in, for example, annual assessment counties, they have a permanent. Board of Equalization, some two year cycle, they have a permanent Board of Equalization. It's not really needed in a place with a four year cycle.
Okay.
And we briefly discussed the option of transforming the BOE into an advisory group. But that would also depend on the route we take.
Yeah, Mr. Moore, you had mentioned that and certainly it sounds like the BOE that has been appointed. You know, is willing to sort of dig in and help, which is very commendable of them. If. There were other things you wanted this group to do besides what's officially within the statutory role of a BOE. Say you were to disband the BOE or, you know, have have it sort of disbanded because the reassessment goes away. You could certainly keep this group together if there are things that you wanted them to do and they were willing to do. Certainly, the board has the ability to point advisory committees. To go out and do things that are sort of delegated. Sort of advisory roles for these committees. So you could certainly appoint the members of the BOE. To an advisory committee along with anybody else you choose to appoint to it. For example, you might appoint the Commissioner of Revenue to it as a sort of. You know, to to assist with that, you know, or you might find other citizens that want to help, but you could certainly put the members. Into an advisory committee, you know, if you did not want them to actually complete their BOE duties. They would no longer be a BOE. They would just be an advisory committee at that point.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, we also have on the line two of our staffers who work most closely with the firm through this process. I'd like to see if they want to and give them an opportunity to maybe speak to some of this. So if we could get Ms. Teagle and Ms. Lawrence unmuted, please. And just talk about maybe some of the experience here, what you guys are seeing, you know, what are some ground facts that we're dealing? Especially as the appeals come in. Just kind of give us the lay of the land. Ms. Teagle, you can start.
Okay, so I have worked pretty closely with Mr. Testing through the entire assessment. I would send him monthly updates of any building permits and new construction that was CO'd throughout from February of two thousand nineteen. All the way up until recently. It wasn't until. Probably during the appeals period that we realized that a lot of the new construction hadn't been picked up. I will say when appeals started, I was getting around thirty. Thirty-five, forty phone calls a day just with. Not only people upset about their values, but clerical and data entry errors. So that's something that I don't know if the board is aware of, in addition to the new construction errors, the lack of parcel visits. But that's just the main things that I can think of off the top of my head that. I'm seeing just from day to day conversations with taxpayers.
Thank you. Ms. Lawrence, did you want to add anything?
Sure, I have had less conversations with Mr. Chesting than Ms. Teagle has, but. The conversations I have had have been mostly him forwarding his correspondence, citizens have sent to him for me to handle for him. I have had numerous FOIA requests where I have to obtain information from him, which has been. Very difficult to obtain. I usually have to go through Ms. Teagle to obtain anything I need. Mr. Chesting has normally not been very useful in obtaining any of these items. Luckily, Ms. Teagle has been the record keeper for all of these items. As far as the BOE appeals, we still have more appeals than we have room for as of right now. And we do have a deadline of April, April first per the county ordinance. I have discussed the possibility of an extension. From the Board of Supervisors possibly to a lot more time for us to meet these appeal dates. We just don't have the amount of time and if we were to possibly hear more citizens to fix these errors, I would like that to be considered. That we already have too many applications for the ones that were turned in on time.
Mr. Chair, we do, we have confirmed that there are citizens who through no fault of their own, perhaps failed to meet the deadline. But have certainly substantial evidence that there were errors on their properties. So I would. I would submit, we need to look at extending if we follow through with with the the board appeals.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to throw in too, and I'm sure some of the other supervisors have the same thing. I have been inundated with calls that. People leave messages with Mr. Chestane or the Office of the Assessor and never get a call back. So that also needs to be put on the record.
If I might add, I've had a bunch of calls from people who complained of his arrogance. And I don't know whether Emily or Olivia have heard any of those complaints, but believe me, I've gotten them. He's been arrogant with me. And I don't think he's the guy that we need to come in and clean this mess up. Stuart, would you repeat that, your last statement? I said, I don't think he's the guy to come in here and clean this mess up because of his, that's that's also in the contract too, proper treatment. Of the employees and the citizens of King William County. And Andrew, if I can.
Stuart, take it away for a second. I've got a, I've got a, that I got a, great, hold on. So you go ahead.
Andrew, if I can. Is the, if this went to a court of law. Would the execution? Of the contract itself hurt us? Because it wasn't, it wasn't executed properly. Will that hurt the county in a court of law?
I can't really answer that question. I'd have to look at the contract and consider exactly what it is you're talking about and. Don't know if a public discussion on that point is a really good idea anyway.
Okay.
I had the same thing, right? And Andrew, that's what we talked about when I was chair, is the same thing, but I think we need to talk to that in closed session.
Yes, definitely. But while we're on hold, regardless, I would like to commend both Ms. Teagle and Ms. Lawrence on their professionalism, everything I've asked them for. They've been very. Quick to turn around and get the information out to citizens that that haven't having issues and they're very concerned. There's, I can't imagine. Some of these citizens, they have substantial issues and we need to get them fixed. So thank you again, ladies.
Oh, I'll second that and they, they, you know, they dealing with a arrogant contractor and people who have issues. And a lot of them have an attitude without even. Speaking and I've had many comments, especially about Emily, of how professional she was and helpful.
All right, and I echo that as well. I know you guys have been through it. And you two have primarily been the ones that are that are trying to. Move this thing forward with with, quite frankly, a lack of support from. The contractor. So, you know, we apologize for the situation that you're in, that you were put in, but y'all did a great job given what you were up against. So, thank you. Okay, does anyone else have any thing else they want to say or any other questions for either the State Department of Taxation? Mr. McRoberts, Ms. Teagle, Mrs. Lauren, or anything before we tee up a public comment period?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer Ms. Funkhauser an opportunity.
Good, good point. Let's get.
If you could unmute Ms. Funkhauser.
Hello, hello, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Karina Funkhauser. I was just elected Commissioner of Revenue last week. I was sworn in on Monday and it's been quite a whirlwind. This morning. Steve Hudgens entered my office and asked me when I thought about the present situation. And my thoughts about the Commissioner of Revenue's office, assuming the real estate responsibilities again. Yeah, I've been at work for three days, so that's quite a bit overwhelming. I'm still learning everything. I have a wonderful staff and I told. Mr. Hudgens, I'm. Didn't have a lot of public experience, public speaking experience at the tax department, but so I typed out something I'd like to just read that right here. So I told him in the present situation that it seemed the most practical and logical action for the Commissioner's office to resume the real estate responsibilities. In fact, I already can. And he asked me if I was going to be attending this meeting this evening and I told him I did intend to meet this evening and I intend to attend. Attend all of the board meetings. And in fact, yesterday I did go to Olivia Lawrence and make sure that I was on the agenda for February twenty second. I want the board to be abreast of what's going on in my office and what we are working on. I mean, right now by March first. All the business license applications and tax relief applications are due and being processed. Last year, we had seven hundred and eighty-seven business licenses were issued from the Commissioner of Revenue's office. As of today, there's a hundred and five business license issued. Last year, there's two hundred and eight tax relief applications approved, as of today, there's a hundred and ten approved. So the next two weeks. Before the March first deadline, I will be very busy in the Commissioner's office. That being said. I am willing to take over these responsibilities in the office, provided we have the additional staff and I would like to give updates. I plan to give updates every board meeting to the Board of Supervisors, what's going on in the office and I can certainly. Give updates about real estate, you know, how many property transfers there were, new construction or improvements. And let you all get enough data to decide if you want to create another land assessment office or real estate assessment office. At some time, you would have the data to make that decision if it was worthwhile. I'm, you know, here to, you know, help the citizens of King William County in any way that I can. And that means assuming the real estate. Responsibilities, that's fine. And if you decide to keep a real estate assessment office, that's fine also. Whatever I can do to help, that's what I'm willing to do. My staff is wonderful. We're all hard workers and willing to do whatever is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations. This is the first time. Your election.
I missed you, Brett Reed. I heard you brought your girls and.
Of course. Okay, so good idea. Thank you. I hadn't even thought of that. Okay, so good idea. Thank you. I, I hadn't even thought of that. Uh, you know, things I had to think about in the last three days. So, any other? Well, I, I'm glad to hear that, Ms. Funkhauser, and I think it is a, it's a discussion that we, we, we need to have once we figure out what path we're going forward. You know, it's, it's a big project, obviously, and uh, it's going to be a collaborative effort to make it work. Whoever's office has ultimately, your office and our side of the house are going to have to be a collaborative unit. Um, and so um, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to, to working with you and making this, making this work. Anyone else have anything for, for anybody else that we've got on the call from uh, the board? For other, for Ms. Funkhauser, Mr. McRoberts, Mr. Compton, or uh, our staff?
Travis, I'd like to throw something in, and the same thing as we were just, as Ms. Funkhauser was stating, and, and welcome, Ms. Funkhauser. As you and I, Travis, I guess, are the most seasoned on this board. And I, I hope I speak for the most of us and for our whole board. We have been working for an in-house assessment office, I would think since the beginning, but we've just been, like you said, so much problems we've had over the years. And thank you, Ms. Funkhauser, for, for stepping up to that and then, and coming to the meetings that, that mean a lot. And I think that's what we should move forward to, because like she said, she has all the records about the new construction. They can update stuff on the fly every week, or, or at least every month if they have to, to keep stuff up to date. We don't have to wait two years, four years, six years for these assessments to happen and hire somebody, then go through all this mess every time. So I commend all that, and that's what I would push forward, and I think that that's what we were trying to do to move the counting forward since we've been on here. But, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to know what Ms. Teagle and Ms. Lawrence feel about, they're, they're the closest probably to the assessment. And what they think? Which way do they think we, can we fix this, or we need to can it and start over? If they can answer that, if they can, that's fine.
I think Emily should go first.
Very diplomatic.
Um, so just working closely with the reassessment, there's pros and cons to each, so I can't say either way how I feel. I understand the financial side of it, and I also understand the citizens, you know, the errors that they're seeing, the frustrations, and getting documentation and having conversations with the assessor. So I, I'm kind of in the middle. I, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to hear what you had to say.
I fear that if we were to not throw out the full assessment, that we would then face litigation from citizens that may not have been heard or may still have been heard, but the assessment may not have been changed through maybe a BOE process. But I fear if we I, I guess that's my thoughts.
Not, Mr. Chair, I've heard uh, options to try and determine which assessments were valid and uh, fair and reasonable, and use those as a baseline if we choose to try to fix. But I tend to agree with the ladies that uh, that uh, probably the best alternative I'm hearing tonight is just to trash it and start over.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, also the treasurer is online. Am I allowed to say what she said, or can we have her speak what she thinks too? Cause she is now our official treasurer for the uh, county also.
Well, you know, while she might not be directly involved in the assessment process, her office will be um, you know, the ones in, then charged with collecting the taxes off of it. So if she wants to uh, to speak to this, I'm happy to allow her time.
Okay. Ms. Bancroft?
Good evening. Hello, thank you. Um, yeah, I was uh, like Karina, just elected last week and um, just newly into the office, but um, I wanted to speak on the assessments. And from what I'm hearing from a lot of citizens, um, there's a lot of people who have not even made an attempt to get on to have theirs disputed. So you've got a lot of folks that the BOE will never hear. You know, some folks have just taken it that, well, this is nothing I can do because I'll never be heard. So they're just gonna wait to see what happens. Personally, mine went up forty-seven percent. My neighbors went up um, thirty-some percent. The property on, beside me, how much did yours go up? Twenty-five percent. Well, none of us have had an opportunity to even uh, make a dispute. And so I, I, that's never going to happen. The BOE will never be able to hear everybody. So in my opinion, would be in everyone's best interest that the Commissioner of Revenue's Department take this over and we just, we just scrap everything that's been done and let her department start all over. And get everybody a fair assessment. That's my opinion.
Thank you. I appreciate your, your thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to put out one last reminder. If you want to speak and you're on the call, but not on the Zoom meeting, star nine raises your hand and gets into queue. If you're on the Zoom meeting and you want to participate in this public comment period, send uh, Travis Wolf a message and he will put you uh, on the list and will work off of the queue. Uh, board members, if you would entertain me a, a moment of personal privilege before we open the public comment period, I would like to start.
Absolutely. I agree.
Okay. So in the, the nine-plus years that I've been on this board, um, I've, I've been through a lot of different projects. Some of them have gone well, some of them have not gone so well for various reasons, but I have always tried to make my default to, to, you know, trust the, the opinions of my leadership team. And uh, the contractors that we have hired un- until I'm, you know, proven wrong. And in this instance, you know, I've, I, I had in the past pretty vocally defended the work of this firm. And uh, I have to admit here in front of all of you uh, that I was wrong. And for that, uh, I, I can only be sorry and promise uh, that I personally will do everything that I can to get this uh, back on track, working with uh, our team, working with our legal team, the staff that have done such a great job in, in trying to keep this thing advancing despite challenges and inadequate support from the contractors uh, and, and new leadership as it comes in. So uh, I, I, again, I, I try my best. I really try to base decisions off of the, the, the best information that I have, but in this instance, I was wrong, and I'm sorry. With that, I will allow uh, Mr. Wolf to go ahead and begin the public comment period. Same rules as always, three minutes for an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. If you're representing a group, please state that you are and state the name of the organization before you begin. And individuals, before you begin, please state your name uh, and the district in which you reside.
Yeah, my name is Raymond.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Raymond Carter, and I am in the West Point District. My concerns, and I know you've all seen my emails, and I will tell you that Ms. Lawrence has done an outstanding job of responding. And running interference for Mr. Chastain. However, I feel that the Commissioner of Revenue needs to take the assessments over one hundred percent and have a staff dedicated under her that are certified by the state. And also, I would like the board and the COR to understand fifty-eight point one dash three nine eight zero for the application of the Commissioner of Revenue or other for officials for corrections, where they can correct these documents, these property ID cards from the citizens throughout a period of up to three years. Now, I know we're going to a two-year assessment, or there's talk of a two-year assessment, so honestly, that would shorten that time. In this current status of this assessment, I would like to see it. Either the BOE make the corrections, or we just cancel the assessment altogether, and I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Wolf, uh, if you could bring up the next person?
Brian Hodges.
Can you uh, state your district, please?
I just requested him to unmute. He has not done so yet.
Hey, can you hear me now?
We've got you, Brian.
Hello?
I'm clear.
Okay. So uh, my name is Brian Hodges. I'm in the uh, Second District. I believe each one of you um, got my email today uh, concerning where we are with us. I think all of us have uh, seen this over the past couple of months, and especially over the past weeks, kind of um, developed in front of us um, to a point where I think that it needs to basically be pushed to the side. I have serious reservations with the construct of the, the way that the contract was put together and the ability to actually look at any way to verify that the work was being done. There's no quality assurance plan that is put in here. There is no in-process reviews that are required by the contractor to ensure that they're actually um, doing what they are supposed to be doing. When we look in here, we've got uh, specific things that any reports, plans, designs, or other items needed for a complete job shall be checked for accuracy by the consultant before submission of final documents. We have a land book that the people of King William have already looked at, and if we are able to within moments show that there are inaccuracies within that land book that is, and the property cards that are being published off of that, if we're able to point those out already, how is it that the contracting firm with the multiple degrees that are listed within the contract that was signed by Mr. Chastain and his company, the certifications that they have, how exactly is it that they were not able to find and correct these same things? My house alone is probably valued at what it should be valued at. But I would bet that you all do not have a picture of the front of my house, the back of my house, nor do you have a picture of the eight-foot-by-eight-foot chicken coop that is part of the property now, because the individual who came here to check my property and do the assessment rang the doorbell, and by the time I got to the door from the back of my mansion of eighteen hundred square feet, he was already getting into his vehicle, and there was a card stuck in my door stating that he had gotten everything that he needed to do my assessment. There is no way in the thirty seconds to ring my doorbell that he was able to do all of the things that he was supposed to do on this property.
Mr. Hodges, thirty seconds remaining.
But you're hearing from cons- okay, you're hearing from multiple people that they have the same thing going on. We need to push this to the side and actually set up a plan. I'm for the Commissioner of the Revenue actually having the ability to do this, but it can't be, I'm going to do it. We need to have a plan, a POAM, to have actual people who are qualified to do this in place before we actually push that off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
Next is uh, Mr. Tim Vaughn.
Good evening. Uh, my camera on my iPad is not currently enabled, so uh, I apologize for that. This is Tim Vaughn. I'm District Five. I'd like to start out with thanking Olivia Lawrence for her outstanding work in responding to the numerous requests for documents that I submitted. She's been very responsive and engaged despite being in a very difficult situation with, with Bright Minds and Mr. Chastain. I also like to thank my supervisor, Ed Moore, and for his help in this matter. And to thank you, the board, for your consideration of what is clearly a very important issue to this county. There are obviously many problems with the assessment, and as Mr. Greenwood noted, there is no easy button here. So I, I'm not going to enumerate the many problems that I've identified. I'm sure Ed has shared my lengthy presentation plan for the BOE, so you have that information available to you. Uh, all that said, I, I believe the only way forward is to invalidate the current assessment and engage a professional firm to execute the, a, a new assessment, or have it done under the COR as you, as you've been discussing. I, I think some of the concerns raised around uh, sunk costs are valid, but I believe those costs could be easily recouped upon the completion of a more professional, reliable, and accurate assessment. Specifically because you'll have more accurately assessed properties, inclusion of properties not currently in the assessment, and simply a more trustworthy outcome. But honestly, the most important um, and valuable reason to take that path is by invalidating that assessment and starting over with a more professional firm and ensuring proper oversight, is you will have shown that as a board, a leadership body in this county, that you're willing to make difficult decisions, and in so doing it, restore trust of the citizens in King William. And not just the assessment process, but the ability of the Board of Supervisors and the county administration to execute good governance. That alone is, is worth the, the, the effort in, in taking that path. And that's really all I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. And I have had an opportunity to review your presentation, and um, it is impressive in its level of detail and you know, among other things, it was one of the things that opened my eyes up to, to really the gravity of the situation. So uh, thanks for preparing it and thanks for sharing it with us.
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend if Mr. Vaughn would like another secondary job that he get with Ms. Moore to do the teaching of the uh, the process.
All right, Mr. Wolf, who do we have next?
Shakina?
Hello?
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, um, I was on here just to ask about the economic grant. I know last month it was tabled um, due to money, financial stuff. So I was wondering any update on that?
Sure. Um, well, I, I, I tell you, this meeting is solely for the purpose of discussing the, the twenty-twenty-one uh, real estate property reassessment. So, and I'm not sure which grant you're, you're speaking to. I, I tell you what, if, if you could take down my email real quick and, and email your question about that grant, and I'll try to get you an answer, but it's not something that we are discussing at this meeting tonight.
Okay.
All right, when you're ready, I'll go ahead and, and read out that email for you.
I'm ready.
All right, it is T M O S K A L S K I at kingwilliamcounty.us. Just send me an email. I'll try to get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Those were the EDA grants that were going out.
I can speak to it if you'd like.
Well, let's, let's keep this meeting to the stated purpose. You know, we've got an agenda set, so we'll, we'll talk about that more uh, later and try to get her, her answer um, tonight or tomorrow.
Fred?
Hello, I'm here.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name's Fred Kraus. I live in District Three. Um, I support, I want to thank y'all for holding this meeting uh, for the citizens of the county. Um, and I um, I'm totally against keeping this assessment. It needs to be reverted back to the two thousand fifteen assessment. And action needs to be taken to prevent these type of issues in the future. One of the biggest complaints I have is that the One of the biggest complaints I have is that the county and the contractors did not adhere to the Code of Virginia on several issues, and it's several code violations that have taken place that have not been fixed or addressed by the county or the assessor. And I'd like to see those addressed and fixed in the future. There's another issue here. There's over $2 million in new construction properties. I've got a list of them all that aren't even been assessed. There's no buildings on the property cards. So those are big issues that I think need to be addressed, and the cost figures. The other issue that my complaint is, you can't get the justification and documentation that's required by the Code of Virginia from this assessor on your assessment. There's no notes pertaining to your appeal that you had with him, other than a property card with a couple of notes marked on it. So other than that, that's what I have to say tonight, but I appreciate you for holding this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kraus.
Can you hear me?
Got you.
Okay. My name is Joanne Schmidt. I'm at West, in West Point, at 712 Main Street. I agree, this assessment needs to be dropped and reassessed, assessments be made. My assessment on my building downtown went up ninety-seven percent. It's, the building is at West Point Chiropractic, and next door is the Lazy Cow. The building next door to me, I talked with Bill Colley at 709 Main Street. His assessment on his building only went up thirty-seven percent. I did talk to some other owners downtown, and their buildings did go up like ninety-seven percent like mine. I did appeal it. It did, went down like six-point-nine-seven percent. Wow, big deal. Let's see, with this amount of an increase, I have three people that rent from me personally. That would be West Point Chiropractic, the new business, the Lazy Cow, and the Union Hall upstairs. So with this big of an increase in the assessment of the building, I will have to double their rent to pay the taxes. Now, let's see, now this may cause them to go out of business. Let's see, West Point Chiropractic has been in West Point thirty-plus years. The Lazy Cow just opened. Do you think raising her rent, doubling her rent, will make her stay? This increase can cause businesses to go out of business and get out of town. Is that, is that what the county wants? I mean, I just, I would think that you'd want to try to keep businesses downtown West Point, but increasing the assessment like this is going to cause a lot of the business downtown to increase their rent if people are renting from them. So, that's all I got to say. Just please, re-get the reassessment. This is not going to work.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. One thing that we've stated before is that it was always this board's desire to equalize the rate when this was done. You know, we were kind of, we were of the impression that we were going to have an average increase of, you know, somewhere around twenty-five to thirty percent, and we just knew that going in. And we had already instructed staff to go ahead, and once we had those final numbers to equalize the rate. Obviously, we have outliers like Ms. Schmidt that, you know, again, are a demonstration of a lack of uniformity, but regardless of just the plain numbers, the board was always going to drop the rate so that the overall tax burden did not increase, but those outliers are not helping. Mr. Wolf.
We have one more call in, waiting for them to unmute, and then we have one more on waiting.
While we're waiting for them to unmute, Ms. Schmidt, one last thing. My kids do love the Lazy Cow, so we definitely want them there.
Phone number ending in 2640, please go ahead.
Oh, yes, this is Steve Soller. I'm in District Four. And going by this last reassessment we have, I agree, the only way to do it is just disregard this whole assessment, have somebody come in, redo it all over again. I spent several hours going through property cards in the county, and some of them were very interesting. You had a property on Walking in Road, fifty-two acres, eight acres, just sort of wasteland, which is a beautiful pond, and it says it had no dwelling on it. But if you look for the last ten or fifteen years, there's been about a four-thousand-square-foot house at that property. And like the other gentleman stated, my property was assessed by a gentleman standing, well, actually sitting in his car in my driveway. It never got out. And when I called and talked to him about it, all he was doing was reading me what was already stated on my property card. So I agree with everybody else. I think we just need to throw this assessment away, keep the original assessment until everything is verified and confirmed is accurate, and then go on from there.
Chris Couch is the last on the list.
Hello? I'm dialed in.
Got you.
Are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen, Chris Couch, District Five, wanted to talk about a couple of things, really, you've heard me talk about this before, accuracy, right? It's not frequency, it's not necessarily the tax rate, it's accuracy. I think we've had a problem in the property cards in the past, and it's very prevalent in the current reassessment as well. Mr. Greenwood, I just want to correct you. I was, I do have a Board of Equalization appeal to actually add things, because even with two sites that it's listed, they somehow missed a three-thousand-square-foot greenhouse that I constructed with a building permit in 2019. There's no reason that shouldn't be on the property card, as well as other farm improvement buildings I've put on the property in the last couple of years. So accuracy of the data is the most important. That is legitimate tax, the legitimacy of the taxes that we charge is another important thing. So we have a lot of properties out there that are over assessed, but at the same time, we have properties that are under assessed, and we all should be paying our legitimate share of legitimate taxes. The only other point I wanted to make is around the governance of this overall project. I think that if, no matter what we do, or what you guys choose to do, moving forward, I think we really need to have some better governance and oversight over these projects. And that includes regular reporting, that includes a change management program and a communication plan. Honestly, the communications that I think are sent to our citizens are very unfriendly to the citizens, very hard to understand, just a couple of numbers in the table, and we need to better help our citizens through this process. I think had we had a better explanation of the process, what was happening, what these numbers on the spreads, on this sheet that was sent to us in the mail meant, it may have calmed some of the tension that was present. So I would recommend that whatever is chosen to be done, we really focus on making sure we bring people along through the journey going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. Mr. Wolf, do we have anybody else in the queue?
No, sir, that was it.
Okay. All right. At this point, we do need to have a closed session with our council to discuss the obvious sensitive legal matters around this issue and some of the options that are available to us, and understand those completely. So we, the board will be leaving this room. We're gonna, we're gonna have another meeting room set up. We will return to this room when we're done with the closed session and make some decisions on what direction we're going to go. So I'd encourage you to stay on, you know, just keep your computer up, and you'll hear us when we come back. And there we'll, we'll talk about what we're going to do going forward. So again, going to go get some sensitive legal advice. We'll be back as soon as possible. We will not belabor this as much as possible. We'll try to keep it short and be back ASAP. So I do need a motion to enter closed session. Mr. Moore, I think you have that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board enter closed session as permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.23711A8 to consult with and receive legal guidance from the county attorney regarding legal options related to the reassessment.
Dang it.
Any discussion? Ms. Lawrence, can you call the roll?
Mr. Hodges?
Wait, did he leave? All right. I think we're good as long as we have a quorum still, so.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. Staff, do we have a way to get Mr. Hudgens in this next room with us?
He has the link, and the session is set up for everybody ready to go.
Okay. All right, so let's go over there. I would like Mr. Hudgens in the room with us. Okay? Everybody, a second to rejoin and get situated. So let's, I'm going to give it two or three minutes here so we can make sure everybody is on, needs to be back on and ready to go. So hang tight.
Jerry, do you have me on audio?
Yeah.
Is Andrew coming back on?
No.
Oh, never mind, I see him.
Okay. Has Mr. Hudgens re-entered the conference room? I see him there. We've got Mr. Garber, we've got Mr. Moore, I see Mr. Hodges.
Mr. Greenwood's on.
You can hear my kids getting ready for bed. Greenwood, okay. All right, well, I think we've got everybody back on. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. I'll hear a mention for SR1.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept SR1.
Second.
Second.
Second, is any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. And now my dog has entered the chat. Okay. It is the board's desire to hold a public hearing, to take the necessary steps to invalidate the assessment and begin a new one. In order to do that, we have a couple of procedural things that we have to do. The first off is I want to entertain a motion to instruct the county attorney to request the court to extend the assessment period by ninety days. The reason we want to do this is to make clear that the assessment is not done, that there is still, is still work, and therefore it would close any claims that this assessment is complete.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we extend the assessment period by ninety days.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. The next thing I need is a motion instructing the county attorney to enter an order with the court to disband the Board of Equalization.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. The next thing I need is a motion instructing staff to advertise notice of an intent to amend the ordinance to change the date of the assessment from January 1st, 2021, to 2023.
So moved.
Dang it.
Any discussion? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. Mr. McRoberts, did we miss anything?
No, sir, I think we've got it done.
Okay. So what we've said in motion is our intent to start this over, and in doing so, the discussion going forward is how we, how we do that. We've been shown some options tonight that we need to have further discussions with the Commissioner of Revenue and our staff on what the best path forward is. Another desire that we have that's been brought to us is the creation of an advisory board or task force to assist with and oversee a future reassessment, and we think that's a good idea. So we will be exploring what avenues are most appropriate to stand that up, and what authority we should be giving to that type of board. I want to thank, first, our staff for sticking with us as always, and for all of the hard work that you guys have done to try to make this thing work. And I want to make it very clear that it is not y'all's fault that this didn't work, it's the fault of the contract. Secondly, I want to thank our legal team for, in very short order, getting together these options and explaining them clearly to us so that we knew exactly what we needed to do to take whatever action that we decided was most appropriate. I want to thank the representatives from the State Board of Taxation for being willing to help with this, being willing to be on this call tonight for all the work that's already been done, training the BOE. You have been a great asset, and I hope you will, I know you will continue to be a great asset going forward as we work to correct this and get it right. And then lastly, and most importantly, I want to thank all of you for bringing these issues to us. We have been, obviously, taking a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails and trying to sort out, you know, fact from fiction and gather the best information possible, and you all have done exemplary jobs of showing us exactly what the problems were so that we, you know, could clearly see them. And without that level of citizen involvement, I don't think we would be having this, having this meeting tonight and taking these actions. So I applaud all of you for your activism and your engagement. We do plan to stay engaged with you throughout this process while we work to get this right. Is there anything else before the board that we need to consider or act on tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point clarification. Do we need to instruct staff to call all the people that have their appointments to let them know, or is this notice going to be enough for them?
Well, sure. Well, staff's aware of that. You know, we've let Mr. Hudgens know that staff needs to take that step, but of course...
Right. I'm just, that was in close session.
...need to be ready to, you know, start notifying people who have hearings coming up that the intent of the board is to, it's to cancel this assessment and start over.
Right. I just wanted to bring it out in public. Like you said, since a lot of people are still in there, we have over eighty-five people still here, so maybe some of them are on there, maybe they would know, so thanks.
Yeah. Anybody else? Mr. McRoberts, is there any other action we need to take?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. If that's the case, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
That one's easy, always.
Yeah.
Ms. Lawrence, somebody say second.
Second.
I don't care who. Ms. Lawrence can sort that out in a minute. All right, there's no discussion on the motion to adjourn, so I will call Ms. Lawrence to take our roll, please.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hmm, hi.
Come on, say it. Thanks again, everyone, and yeah, we'll see. Our next regular meeting is the 22nd, which will still be on Zoom because we still live in the COVID world. It was encouraging to see so many people on tonight, so we're here, we're listening, and we are accessible, so reach out. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.